Another great meeting. I think before we start, I would just sit back and say, let's take a moment to think about our friends in Houston and in Texas with what they've been going through. We live in an area that could be pretty similar. And I would just say we'll start with a moment of silence, just thinking about our friends in Texas. Thank you.
Will, if you could tag on to the approaching storms down the Caribbean, too, about what could be happening there?
That's an understatement. That's a great point. Thank you, Rosemary. We do need to be thinking about that. But talking about good friends, we have some great friends that we're getting ready to introduce. We got the great Captain Rich Meadows, Oceana, you know, the best airbase in the world located in Virginia Beach, commanded by Captain Rich Meadows, the man. And it is a pleasure to welcome you here, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Merritt, thanks to the council. And Chad Vinslet, the XO, Ray Forenzy, the AQ's manager, and Johnny Lauerbeck are our community planners.
And we thank you, the whole team being over here today, really do. Thank you.
So ironically, Les, do I need to?
So the world watching.
Got you. So last week, or two weeks ago, we were doing our environmental impact, or environmental assessment, on the conversion between the legacy Hornet to the Super Hornet. Now ironically, 10 or 11 of the 15 operational squadrons are already Super Hornet squadrons. So we're just talking about a one-for-one replacement with the remaining squadrons. Which reminds me, we need to update this slide because that is, in fact, a legacy Hornet right there. So we'll do that. But anyway, at that time, Dave said, hey, we were having a public meeting, and Dave said, hey, why don't you come on over and address the council to what the community had to say when they came. And I'll go into that in a minute. But also, so we decided, hey, we'll wrap up our biannual state-of-the-base into it. So that being said, go ahead, Johnny. So just some, about 17,000 people work on Oceana and Dam Neck. About 330 aircraft right now, and that fluctuates between 330, 350 aircraft, 15 squadrons. One replacement squadron, meaning that they train pilots to come in and fly. And then we have an aggressor squadron, which for all intents and purposes is bad guys, and they train to bad guy tactics when we go. And then one heavy lift squadron, or they fly VR-56, they fly basically Boeing 737s. 64,000 flight operations out of Oceana, okay? And that does not include FCLPs, which we call carrier landing practice. It's all done at Ventris. We don't do any at Oceana. So 64, I just sat down with a pencil and paper before I got in here. But if you divide 365 into that, and then the number of months, and then days, it comes out to about a flight every 10 minutes, 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. So it's a busy place. It's a busy place. But I want to emphasize that when we fly out of Oceana, we're flying to go out to the training area and come back. And then again, all the carrier landing practice is done down at Ventris. And then that's what the government brings in between Dam Neck and, between Dam Neck Annex and Oceana, a little over a billion dollars. Okay, next slide. Oh, some of the challenges. I don't care if we ever talk about that one challenge, but the fuel spill, 94,000 gallons. It happened in May. It ended up, there were a lot of good points that came out of this. But we had to relocate quite a few families, 54 families, about 180 folks. However, the lesson learned from that is we're way behind the game when it comes to executing money in order to move these folks. They actually didn't get moved until about six days into the incident, and by that time it was too late. A lot of people were very upset, and we were able to get them into the, into different hotels in the area. Most of them stayed about two weeks. One or two families stayed a little bit longer. But we haven't heard much about the fuel spill in the last month. We will continue working with Virginia Department of Environmental Quality, and they'll continue to monitor both London Bridge ditch, as well as the Wolf Snare area where the majority of the fuel spill was. And again, great coordinated action between the Coast Guard, the city of Virginia Beach, to include the police, fire department, emergency management. We're all just came together as a unified command, operated very efficiently and effectively. Lessons learned were performed by the Coast Guard, as well as XO Vinslet and Aaron Sutton sat down and got together a few more lessons learned that we'll just use between us to ensure that we smooth that stuff out if we ever have an incident like that again. Okay, next one. So achievements. So for the council, Oceana airspace just extends a little bit off over to the beach and then a little, a little bit into the city area there. That Class Delta airspace, drones don't operate, we can't have drones operating in that. Now, the stuff that happens on the beach, we don't have a lot of control over. And I think you're, you as a city, actually, I think, directed not to control the drones from a state, a state aspect. But in Oceana, again, we try to get a handle on this. So we got together with the police department, with Virginia Beach Police, and set up kind of a memorandum of understanding in order for the police department to fly the drones in Oceana airspace, at basically, basically the drop of a hat. And it proved very well when you had the active shooter situation on the 13th of June. And we were able to implement that MOA, or memorandum of agreement, basically, it was one phone call, the whole thing took maybe two minutes. And they had a drone up, and I'm not sure how effective it was, but I think he used it, and I think you're...
It was extremely effective, and I'm so glad y'all came up with that policy.
Yeah, and I, you know, I will say that, I've mentioned it in VTCs with the mid-Atlantic installations in region, and they really want to take this and use this as a boilerplate for all the installations when it comes to operating drones. And there's article in the New York Times about it today, and military installation. So again, I really appreciate that, and I think it's great work by both my team and yours. Thank you. Next slide. So the environmental assessment. The environmental assessment, the draft came to us at the end of August. That time shortly after, we decided, since we switched from environmental impact study to environmental assessment, we didn't have to do any more public meetings, but we elected to, to just kind of check the block. We did one in Oceana, or in Virginia Beach at the, is it Knights of Columbus? Is that right? Yeah, the Knights of Columbus, over by Red Wing Park. About 18 people showed up. And, you know, there were some concerns with the noise, as we always, when we have these, even when we, you know, discuss drinking water, we always get, hey, what about the noise? So that came out. A couple, a couple issues with, was it basically noise? Anyway, the crowd was very cordial, is where I'm going. And we had some good discussion in there, alleviated some concerns. Oh, I know what it was. It was what can we do as a homeowner to help soundproof our house, knowing that this sound isn't going to go away? And our public affairs officer took those questions and responded to those folks. There are some construction things that can be done. But anyway, all in all, it worked out very well, and I think people, people were comfortable. I will tell you, they had the exact same meeting in Washington State, up in Woodby Island, the air station up there, and they had 335 people show up at theirs. So when you have these public meetings for stuff like this, more is not better. So 18 was a lot better than 335.
I can kind of relate to that.
Yeah. I talked about the one-to-one replacement there. Ironically, it's a one-to-one replacement until you get to the FRS. VFA 106 is the training squadron. They have, in their squadron, about 150 aircraft. They have a lot of legacy Hornets in that squadron that they train with right now, that those will eventually go away. So you see about 40 less aircraft on the flight line. However, there's going to be no impact. We'll continue to fly the op tempo that we fly with the operational squadrons. And then as, as we went through the environmental assessment, we did generate some new noise contours, but, and if you have noise contour questions, I'm going to punch over to Johnny, he's the expert at that. But the noise contours that we used at the Joint Land Use Study are good, they're still good noise contours to have and to follow. So again, any questions on that, feel free to send them our way, and then Johnny can help me out with that. Next slide. Okay, we had two turtle nests over at Dam Neck, and we had, we literally watched the turtles 24 hours a day, the nests, for like three weeks, and they had a bunch of them made it out, I guess. I don't know how many of them lived. XO's not too optimistic about that. Go ahead. So the runway, runway construction project and the lighting project, those continue. We're almost done with the runway. The lighting project will be done in 2019. Overall, there's about $100 million repair and upgrade to the airfield. The solar array farm, if you're going down Dam Neck Avenue and you look over to the left when you go into the base, it's quite an operation. I was over there about three weeks ago, and Dominion Power gave us a dog and pony, and they're going to put up 81,000 actual solar panels in the entire area. We don't see any of that power per se, right off the bat. That power will go to Dominion slash Virginia Beach. We do see an in-kind in some of the infrastructure that's run back to the base, meaning if the base is old and they don't have, if we, if we lose power on the, on the base, they don't flip a breaker, we have to fix some stuff on the base. Now, with the new infrastructure, they'll flip a switch and we'll be able to get power back. So we're excited for that. We're being close with AQ's and the REPI, the inner traffic facility. Again, looking to wrap that up and have you guys, or have the road extend across there to get folks in there. And we continue with the integrated training. Just had the airfield mishap drill three weeks ago, and just worked out great. A lot of volunteers from Virginia Beach, along with the police and fire. Centerra set up, they set up an entire hospital right outside the fire station. The good collaboration and good, good training that we get, and I think you all get that too. So, next slide. And finally, the airshow 15th and 16th, 16th and 17th of September. This should be honoring the home front. We're looking forward to it. And then on the 15th, the STEM event, that's every fifth grader in Virginia Beach, and about 3,000 chaperones.
It's a sight to see.
I say this in general, it was, it was fun last year, not as fun this year, but it's going to be a great event, and I'm really excited. I've talked to Dr. Spence multiple times, and it's just, it's a neat event, and I hope we can keep it going.
You're bringing some kids from Chesapeake, too, aren't you?
Bringing, yeah, how many? 300?
300 from Chesapeake, just from one school.
Good, good, okay.
Yeah, so it'll be good.
They'll be there in the morning, so if they're...
Great, great.
But yeah, we're really looking forward to that event. And we hopefully ironed out any kinks we had last year. Last year went extremely well, but this year hopefully goes better, getting people off the base. And next slide. Okay, next year, 75th anniversary of Oceana. We're in the kind of the, working with Mary Ellen Baldwin over at Navy League to try to come up with some, some good events, or one or two, like really knock it out of the park type events. And some ideas right now, maybe a gala, or like a formal event in one of the hangars with some, for lack of a better phrase, some famous people come in to enjoy with us. It'll definitely be part of the airshow, the 75th anniversary. And then in the spring of next year, we'll have the French Navy will be in town with that aircraft right there, the Raphael. Their only aircraft carrier, the Charles de Gaulle, will be going into the yards, which they're going to go do some work on it for about a year. They want to make sure that their, their skills don't atrophy. So they'll come, they'll come over, fly with us, both at Oceana, Ventris, and then they'll go out to the ship after about two weeks' practice, and they'll go out to George Washington, I believe, and they'll spend about three weeks out there. So we're looking forward to having them as well. They'll probably stay on the base, but I think we're still working that out. I think there's probably a good chance that they'll be in a lot of the hotels as well. Next slide. Thanks, and then give me one more, the backup side. So I briefed you on this six, seven months ago. So the, this is all the projects we have going on. The barracks are completed, or the barracks renovation is complete over at Oceana. Ironically, those buildings are really old. Some of the barracks that we restored, we now have a building that was built in 1954 that's really not in good shape, but it's a barracks. So we're continuing to modernize these, but we get to a point where it's better just tear it down and build a new one rather than continue to modernize these. But we'll, we'll work that. I told you about the airfield and the runway and the lighting project. The hangar repairs are ongoing. Nextcom headquarters is almost complete, and that's there off Virginia Beach Boulevard. The aerial target facility has not started yet, but they are ready to go with that, as well as the maritime surveillance facility located on the south side. And then about $18 million for, to refurbish the reserve center.
Well, thank you, Captain. Now, is there any questions or comments from council? We sincerely want to thank you for the good partnership, Rich, that we have here. I also want to thank you and everyone that's over at Oceana, well, anyone serving the military right now, because it's not the easiest of times with the finances. And I've seen it firsthand by going over to these bases and seeing the condition of some of the stuff there. And to me, it's inexcusable, but I pray that, you know, money will come to fix some of these things. I'd also sit back and say to council that there isn't much that my wife likes about the mayor's job, except one thing. And she really loves the fact that we've made so many friends in the military. And Rich is just another fine example of that, you know. These are just the best people serving our country, great people, and I'm happy to say they've become great friends over the years. So we appreciate everything you do, and we're so glad to have had you here today.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, Council.
All right. The legislative package, where is Robert Mathias? All righty.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, you received the draft legislative agenda for 2018 in your package on Friday. I can go over it today very quickly, because there's not, thankfully, not a lot of new additions this year. As you know, we put the package together based on input from council, the departments, and your boards and commissions. And this year, as we've done for the past number of years, we have the package split into two parts. Basically, your long-term policy positions, positions you voted on and had in your package previously, and new items. And so, number one, post-Labor Day opening for schools, I don't need to go into great length on this one. There was an interesting article in the paper over last week about Maryland and how Ocean City has had just a complete renaissance in their business the end of August, since the governor mandated that they open their schools post-Labor Day. So I think that's, we'll be able to get some great information about how their sales have gone up the last couple of weeks of August, first week of September, because we'll have to fight that fight again this coming year in the General Assembly. Moratorium of uranium mining, we don't expect there'll be any push for that this year. I know the mayor has reached out to both of the candidates for governor to make sure they were on the right side of this issue.
And they are.
Increased funding for mental health care, that also is a long-term position of the council, and the Human Rights Commission has also been supporting that very strongly. Voting rights, basically, this is for no-excuse early voting. Council's had this in the package for a number of years. It's supported by the Human Rights Commission, and it's an item that has received very good support from our delegation. Unfortunately, the issue usually dies in a House subcommittee without a vote on it. There was, and you'll probably be hearing later, about council supporting an independent redistricting commission. Our delegation has been very supportive of that also. However, I don't think there'll be any action in 2018 session for two things. Number one, the even year, first year of the biennium is not the year that constitutional amendments are accepted. They usually have to come in the second year of the biennium, there's a intervening election, and then they have to be voted on again. And also, the Supreme Court has this issue in front of it for its upcoming term in October, specifically redistricting Virginia, whether it was done for political reasons as opposed to other reasons. The General Assembly is usually remiss to take on items that are before the court, especially the Supreme Court. Next page, please, Brandy. Solution to coastal flooding, regional greenhouse gas initiative, this is regging, this is basically a carbon trading program. Delegate Bela Nuevo has been a big sponsor of this. It could mean perhaps $300 million a year to Virginia. It's basically a carbon trading program. It's been used quite well in the Northeast, and it has not increased utility rates. Minhaiden fishing regulation, again, this was the council's package last year. It's very much supported by our delegation, especially Delegate Knight. Governor's cabinet level for resiliency officer for recurrent flooding. Councilmember Wood is on the Delegate Staley-run commission on recurrent flooding, and we've been pushing very hard on this. The mayor wrote a letter, the governor, asking to put this in his budget, and we're hopeful he does. That will ease a lot of the problem. Basically, they could consolidate where this issue is looked at, and a number of other secretariats, and the one secretariat that could have a view of this issue. And this is obviously with Houston and perhaps Florida later this week, a very important issue for us. Animal cruelty, this was in your package last year. Councilman, Member Wood was the patron. This is basically, under Virginia law right now, you can all but kill an animal, and it's still a misdemeanor. It's only after you kill a pet, a dog or cat pet. And Senator D. Staff has, again, said he will champion this issue. And this year, rather than amending some existing code, we're going to add a new code section. It'll make it, I think, easier to get through scrutiny in the General Assembly. Last year, we did quite well, except there was a nominal $50,000 cost attributed it, because every time you increase code violations, you have to finance it, and we didn't have that money available, but we will this year, I think, pretty surely. Next one, please. Certificate of public need. Again, this is issue that will be front of the General Assembly again this year, and council's been supportive of maintaining the certificate of public need as it now stands. And the expansion of the Virginia Human Rights Act, again, this has been in council's package for a number of years. And basically, right now, this is handled by an executive order from the governor, but this would prohibit, at the state level, the same kind of protections that we have here at the local level, that you cannot be discriminated against for your sexual orientation, religion, gender, et cetera. And we did have two other requests, well, one new request and one past request. In the last several years, you all have supported the expansion of Medicaid. We made a conscious decision this year not to include it in the package, just because of the uncertainty of the ACA, Obamacare, because we don't know what's going to happen to that, and that obviously will drive what happens with Medicaid expansion. There was also a request from the Human Rights Commission that we include an item that would give driver's license to undocumented immigrants. We did not include that in the package. We were unable to get a council patron for it. New items. Next page, please. Okay, new initiatives. Mr. Moss did his homework, as always, and did a deep dive into the Eastern Virginia Groundwater Management Area Act. And it had a recommendation in there that the cost to administer this act, which affects all of Virginia, not just Eastern Virginia, but all of Virginia, and certainly everything east of the fall line, where about 65% of the taxes to the Commonwealth are generated, to manage this program, rather than it coming out of the general fund, there was a suggestion that fees be in place for everybody in the Eastern Virginia Management Area. Mr. Moss rightly said that this is not the way to go. And so while we support the goals of the Eastern Virginia Management, Water Management Area, we don't support us having to pay for it, except through the general fund, where all of Virginia gets the impact, the benefit of this, all of Virginia should pay for it. Mr. Moss, I hope I captured your...
I think I'm talking.
Great, thank you. Floor on the regional gas tax for Hampton Roads Transportation Accountability Commission. As y'all know, during the General Assembly in 2013, House Bill 2313 was passed, and it raised some taxes, including changing the gas tax to a percentage, but it put a floor on the gas tax statewide, and it was the wholesale price of gas the week of February 13th of 2013. The General Assembly, and this has been told to me repeatedly through an oversight, not through any overt action, did not include the Hampton Roads Transportation Accountability Commission, or the Northern Virginia Transportation Accountability Commission in the floor. So we're now losing about $20 million a year in revenue that we expected to get through House Bill 2313. So we're up to about $60 million, $80 million in lost revenue now, and as long as gas prices stay low, that loss will continue to go. As you know, we have over $10 billion worth of projects, and $20 million a year would allow us, HR Tech, to do the debt service on about $250 million worth of debt. And we would very quickly be able to move these projects forward more quickly, and also cut down on the cost of inflation. All of inflation is fairly low. Construction inflation is still running about 5%. And very quickly, when you have a billion dollars worth of projects, inflation is eating into your revenue. So what we've requested is that the regions, the two regions, Northern Virginia and Hampton Roads, have the same gas tax floor as the state. And number three, this is a do us no harm issue right now. During the 2017 session, the General Assembly, there was legislation introduced in the House that would greatly prohibit the great work that's been done through the leadership of Mr. Davenport and the rest of the region and across the state in the provision of broadband cable. We, you all have seen many presentations on this, and we're saving five to eight million dollars a year by providing the service ourselves, even though we paid the monopolistic local provider to provide the infrastructure. We are saving money by doing it ourselves in-house. And also, there was an initiative at the Senate level to greatly prohibit or limit how we could manage cellular facilities, cellular, whether it's 5G or the existing generation of cell networks. And basically, the bill that was introduced in the Senate would have taken away almost all the authority that local governments have to manage these type of facilities. The Federal Communication Commission is looking at this very strongly. They have some draft regulations out there that we hope don't go anywhere, but they would basically take all the power away from local governments anyway. So what we're asking here is do no harm to local governments on prohibiting what we're currently doing on broadband cable, and do no harm on what we're doing with managing fifth generation or the current generation of wireless communications. We're not going to stand in the way of these revenues, excuse me, of these resources going forward, technologies going forward, but don't take away our ability to manage what happens in a right of way on buildings, et cetera. So, Mr. Davenport, did I get that for you?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Mayor, that's, we only have three new items this year.
Very good. We do have a question, Jim Wood.
Going back to the Minhaiden thing, Bob.
Yes, sir.
Is that still not regulated by the MRC?
It is still not regulated. It's the only fishery in the Commonwealth that's not regulated by VMRC, and what we're asking is that VMRC given the ability to regulate it.
So, but that's what we've been asking for.
Yes, sir. Delegate Knight's had that bill in for a number of years now.
Any reason to expect that it's going to be successful?
I always hope for the best, that people see the light, but it's going to be an uphill battle. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, John.
No, I said that just causes a problem in my district, because people go out on the beach, and there's a million dead fish.
Yes, it's a mess.
Exactly. They're supposed to, they have a gentleman's agreement that they're supposed to say, like three miles offshore, where the chances of the fish washing up on the beach would be lessened, but anybody that goes down the oceanfront during Minhaiden season can just throw a rocket and hit the boats almost.
John Moss.
First, I applaud the shorter list. Shorter list is more effective, so I think that's great. And does 13 still preserve our ability, if we wanted to, to like have... And does 13 still preserve our ability, if we wanted to, to, like, have Wi-Fi zones, say, along the railroad track? If we made it into a bike path, that we could install public Wi-Fi for use by the public on public property?
Yes, sir. What we're trying to do is to, yeah, is to not lose any ground from what we currently have, and I think we currently have the authority to do that.
Thank you very much.
This is do us no harm.
Louis Jones.
Bob, the issue that I discussed with you just a few minutes ago.
Yes, sir.
If that requires legislative action, I might want to add...
Yes, sir. You have the calendar of the schedule for adoption. We're going to have a public, you will have a public hearing in two weeks, and then the first meeting in October, you would vote on the initiatives. But obviously, anytime between now and when the General Assembly starts, you can add issues to the package.
Thank you. Yes, John.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bob reminded me that we don't do federal items on our legislative agenda, but one thing that we have been working through is the recurrent flooding federal program. And, you know, as we delve deeper into it, we're actually FEMA, our region of FEMA is the only one that requires that the contracts be done in a way that made it impossible for us to do it. In other words, in all the other regions, at least the ones locally, the homeowner's able to contract directly with the contractor, and administratively, we're forced to do it so that we're actually the contracting entity. So we've been looking to try and make that change so that it would be consistent with the other FEMA regions, and I know it won't be in this packet, but I wanted the council to be aware that we are kind of working towards that, and there may be something that we bring back forward to everybody to get some help.
And John Moss.
I would recommend highly that the folks take advantage of the new executive order that the President put out relative to revamping infrastructure projects that's fairly broad. And I'd get over, I don't know the appropriate principal deputy, Malkavy, is over at Office of Management and Budget, but I would certainly get on his calendar and tell him what you want to accomplish, because certainly, all my indications are from people that I know that this is an administration just looking for opportunities to put the past bureaucrats' processes behind, and that extends to flood control projects, many things. Matter of fact, I'll be talking about council concerns. We really need to look at that executive order and exploit it to its maximum ability. They're looking for places where there's places to improve, and while maybe the middle bureaucrats may not be as eager, people at senior leadership are looking for opportunities, but they have to know that the opportunities exist.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Bob.
Thank you all very much. If you have any additions, please let me know.
Thank you. Princess Anne Plaza, Windsor Woods, and the Lakes Drainage Area. I will give this to you, Mr. City Manager.
I appreciate that. Mayor Sessoms, members of council, continuing on with our explanation of projects in the works and efforts to combat public enemy number one. Today, we will discuss a pretty integral internal stormwater system that we have in our city that connects Windsor Woods, the Plaza, and the Lakes. They were, of course, as everyone knows, seriously affected by Hurricane Matthew and the 14 inches of rain that we had as a result of that in the interval of our city. And so, we have our city engineer, John Fowler, here today to walk us through that. John, thanks for being here.
Glad to have you.
Thank you. Well, Mayor Sessoms, members of council, it's a pleasure to be here again for this briefing on three of our largest and arguably most important flood relief projects. That's Princess Anne Plaza, Windsor Woods, and the Lakes. I'll be giving the introduction and introducing some of the key project team members. After that, Tony Alger and Fred Munsey will give the main presentation. Of course, we all recall only too well, about a year ago, Hurricane Matthew dumped about 13 inches of rain on these three neighborhoods. Now, under normal circumstances, that would have been a problem, but it was far from normal circumstances. About two and a half weeks before Tropical Storm Julia had also dumped about 13 inches of rain, and about two and a half weeks before that, Tropical Storm Hermine, I believe it was, dumped four or five. Now, what that meant was that when Matthew came with his 13 inches, which fell in less than a day, the lakes and the ponds were pretty well full, the soil was saturated, and the downstream waters were running high. So in effect, there was nowhere for that 13 inches to go, and these three neighborhoods really suffered on account of that. Council stepped up, and in the current CIP, provided $42 million worth of funding in the six-year CIP to start tackling that problem. Staff, I believe we've stepped up. We've appointed some of our most senior members to the project team, and I believe we've selected a top-notch firm to be our partner on this project, and that is Michael Baker teamed up with CDM Smith. Now, Michael Baker, they've demonstrated to us in the past that they can take large, multifaceted civil engineering projects and take them through planning, design, permitting, and getting them built. We only have to look at our own Lake Gaston project to see what they can do. CDM Smith truly are stormwater and stormwater modeling experts. They're currently developing the stormwater models for each of our 31 drainage basins, and those stormwater models will be used for our master planning efforts. Now, currently, we have underway the heavy engineering analysis to identify exactly what the problems are and to run a scenario of storms through those analyses and to come up with various alternatives for the improvements. The goal, then, is to package those improvements into a program together with a schedule and implementation needs, bring that back to the council, and we should have that within 10 months. Now, that doesn't mean we're not doing anything else in the meantime. The team is actively looking at early projects that we can do upfront that will provide some level of benefit now that are readily identifiable and doable and can be integrated in with the larger program that comes out of the engineering analyses. With that, though, I'd like to introduce some of our key members of our team. From Michael Baker, we have Mr. Fred Munsey, P.E. Fred has 34 years of engineering experience. Fred's in senior management with Michael Baker. He's been there a long time, but the firm is allowing Fred to manage these three projects, and not only that, but that's all he's going to be doing, is managing these three projects. We have Clarence Warrenstaff from Michael Baker.
Never seen him before.
You may have never seen him before. After 20 years as the utility director with our city, he's here. And Clarence, as we all know, is a fine gentleman, and he'll be handling the public outreach part for Michael Baker. From our team, we have Mr. Greg Johnson. I will diplomatically say Greg has over 40 years of engineering experience. Greg is a stormwater and stormwater modeling expert. He truly is. We have Mike Monday down here. Mike is in charge of the Stormwater Project Section in our Stormwater Engineering Center. Mike is, has about 30 years of experience. You have your city engineer. I have 37 years of engineering experience, and I feel confident saying that stormwater and stormwater models are an area that I have some knowledge in, too. And we have Tony Alger. Tony has about 24 years of engineering experience. She leads our Stormwater Engineering Center, and Tony's talent and job is to make sure that all the rest of us are accomplishing what we're supposed to do, when we're supposed to do it, how we're supposed to do it, and to make sure that the resources are there. So with that, I'm going to ask...
Well, to John and to the entire team, you know, we really appreciate you all being here, and we will let you all know we're betting on you, too, by the way we made to it, okay?
I think if you did, the average is about 36 years' worth of experience for the people that are on this project. Tony, if you want to come up, we'll turn it over to you. We'll be available for any questions that you may have.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Happy to be here. I'm going to start by discussing the challenges that these neighborhoods are experiencing and why they are flooding. First and foremost, the elevations in these neighborhoods are extremely low. I've got some slides that are going to show this. Sea level is rising. Sea level has risen one foot in the last 50 years and is expected to rise another foot and a half in the next 50 years. I'm going to talk about the frequency and severity of storms and how they're increasing. I've got a good graphic that demonstrates that. And finally, infrastructure in these neighborhoods is over 50 years old. These neighborhoods were constructed in the early days of the city. Princess Anne Plaza in 1961, the Lakes in 1964 and 1976, and Windsor Woods in 1966. The infrastructure in these neighborhoods is undersized according to today's current This is a 1949 aerial showing the neighborhoods. What's interesting in this photo shows Windsor Woods, Princess Anne Plaza, and the Lakes, and these areas were forested back then. You can see the farmland along Holland Road and Lynnhaven Road. What you could surmise from this photo is that those areas of Windsor Woods, Princess Anne Plaza, and the Lakes were probably pretty wet, and that's why they remained forested instead of farmland. Now, I'm going to show, this is the development that occurred, like I just mentioned, in the early days of the city. Route 44 was constructed in 1967. You see that to the north. Now, I'm going to show you the streams, the creeks, and the lakes that drain the neighborhoods. And this is the FEMA flood zone map. And as you can see from this photo, the majority of the area is in the 100-year floodplain, and that's elevation seven. And finally, these are the homes that were affected by Hurricane Matthew. Now, I want to talk about the tidal impacts to these neighborhoods. To the northwest, we've got Thalia Creek. To the northeast, we've got London Bridge Creek, and to the south, we've got West Net Creek. And when tides are running two feet high, you can see the colors show that most of the water does stay within the banks of the canals, the rivers, and the lakes. Up to four-foot tide, you can see it's coming up to the top of London Bridge Creek. It's flooding some low-lying areas. And then up to six feet, you can see much more flooding in the low-lying areas and some street flooding, and you can see London Bridge Creek has overtopped. Eight feet, major structural flooding. And then 10 feet. This demonstrates basically London Bridge Creek and Thalia Creek are now connected. And that leads me into sea level rise. As I mentioned, sea level has risen a foot in the last 50 years. These three graphs are from NOAA. Since 1927, the gauge at Sewell's Point has shown an increase in sea level rise of 4.61 millimeters per year. At the Chesapeake Bay Bridge Tunnel, since 1975, sea level has risen 5.94 millimeters per year. And at Duck, since 1978, the sea level has risen 4.53 millimeters per year. And what this means in the last 50 years, you can see at each one of the gauges, you've got nine inches increase at Sewell's Point, 11 and a half inches at Chesapeake Bay Bridge Tunnel, and 8.9 inches at Duck. So when we start to look at some of the design alternatives and the infrastructure improvements that we're going to do with these neighborhoods, we need to consider at a minimum one-foot sea level rise and probably three-foot sea level rise. Now, about the future rainfall, I mentioned that the frequency and the number of storms are, have been increasing dramatically. This chart shows since 1950, the black line represents the actual peaks over threshold at the Norfolk Gage, and between 1950 and 2003, they did a trend line. This chart comes from NOAA. A trend line was developed, and that's the first line at the bottom. Between 1950 and 2016, they updated that trend because you can see the storms were increasing based on the actual Norfolk Gage peaks over threshold. Now, if we look at 2017, the lines to the right, the colored lines, represent different model simulations. The green line represents the most accurate information based on the actual peaks over threshold for Norfolk. So if we take that green line and start at 2017, we have a new trend. So basically, what we're seeing here is that it's raining harder and more often.
Is that Norfolk Gage at the airport?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
So all of that information leads me to what happened last year, as John mentioned, Hurricane Matthew. These photos were actual photos taken during that storm in the neighborhoods of Princess Anne Plaza, the Lakes, and Windsor Woods. Hurricane Matthew was an extreme rain event, as John mentioned. Thalia Creek and London Bridge Creek, the water surface elevations were 5.3 feet. At West Net Creek, it was seven feet, so if you add 13 inches of rain on top of that in a low-lying area, the water has nowhere to go. So this map is showing you the elevations of the neighborhood. All of the colored areas are below, are between eight and four feet. I think the most important thing to take away from this slide is that the majority of the neighborhood is below 10 feet.
Was the rain event a 500-year event, or was the combination of the tidal and the rain a 500-year event?
No, it was not a tidal event at all. It was just a rain event.
500-year?
500-year, yes.
All right, thank you.
So as John mentioned, city council responded. You supplied $42 million in the six-year CIP with another $86 million to be programmed beyond that. These are the amounts, the $20 million, the $17 million, and the $2 million that has been added to each of these projects in the current CIP. And Public Works stepped up. These projects are moving forward. The budget was approved on May 9th, 2017. The very next day, we had an RFP out for Architectural and Engineering Services. On June 22nd, statements of interest and qualifications were received. July 1, the budget went into effect, and on July 20th, we selected Michael Baker, Team of CDM Smith, as our engineer. But I do want to discuss that everything that has occurred in this neighborhood is not news to Public Works. We've been working in this neighborhoods, these neighborhoods since 1990. These are some of the completed projects that have been done. Canal Number Two, Rosemont Road Windsor Woods Drainage Improvements, Princess Anne Plaza Drainage, Stormwater Infrastructure Rehabilitation, and Bow Creek Rec. Center Storm Drainage Improvements. Canal Number Two was a cost participation project with the Army Corps of Engineers. It diverted stormwater from London Bridge Creek. It was completed in 1990 for a total project cost of $55 million. Rosemont Road Windsor Woods Drainage. These were two stormwater detention basins that were constructed. It was completed in 1996, and the total project cost was $1.2 million. Princess Anne Plaza Drainage Phase Two. These were improvements within the Bow Creek Golf Course. There were two culverts that were placed at Bow Creek Boulevard and Clubhouse Road, completed in 1998 for a cost of $5.9 million. Stormwater Infrastructure Rehabilitation. These were multiple projects that were done within the Princess Anne Plaza neighborhood. The improvements included sliplining pipes and replacing pipes. It was completed in 2008 for a cost of $5 million. And finally, Bow Creek Rec. Center Storm Drainage Improvements. These were improvements within the golf course to help drainage along Clubhouse Road. It was completed in 2015 for a cost of $600,000. So we're currently doing additional projects within these neighborhoods. These next group of projects are dredging projects. They're either under construction now or will be by the end of the year. We've got North Gate Ditch, Windsor Woods Canal, Windsor Oaks West One, Two, and Three. North Gate Ditch, this is going to dredge 6,000 linear feet of canal. We're going to remove approximately 3,000 cubic yards of material. Noticeful proceed was given in May of 2017. Construction should be complete by January of 2018 for a cost of $2 million. Windsor Woods Canal, this will dredge 4,100 linear feet, approximately 10,900 cubic yards. Approximately 10,900 cubic yards of material will be removed. Notice to proceed was given in June. Construction will be complete in June of 2018 for a cost of $2 million. Windsor Oaks West Phase One. This will dredge 1,510 linear feet, removing approximately 4,200 cubic yards of material. Notice to proceed was given in June, with construction being complete hopefully in October. Total project cost, $750,000. Windsor Oaks West Two will dredge 2,760 linear feet, removing 7,000 cubic yards of material. Notice to proceed was given in July 2017. Construction complete January of 2018 for an estimated cost of $800,000. And Windsor Oaks West Phase Three. This will dredge 2,100 linear feet. Approximately 5,000 cubic yards of material will be removed. Notice to proceed hopefully in October of 2017. Construction complete June of next year for a cost of $600,000. So moving forward, we are going to complete all of these projects by the end of next year. Well, no, will be done hopefully by the June of next year. Operations is going to keep the infrastructure maintained. That's going to be an ongoing process. Michael Baker is going to help us identify and implement upfront improvements. And those could be portable pumps to draw down Lake Windsor, selected detention system upgrades, and selected collection system upgrades. Michael Baker is doing our detailed engineering analysis to develop the specific program of flood control measures. For the purposes of the analysis, we've combined the three neighborhoods since the drainage systems work together. The engineering analysis will identify the needed improvements, identify the cost of those improvements, identify the implementation plan of the improvements, including a phasing plan, identify the environmental permitting required, and finally, design, permit, and construct the identified improvements. And we hope to have this engineering analysis complete by July of next year. And now I want to turn it over to Fred Muncy, so he can talk about his company's objectives and their general approach to the project.
Fred, glad to have you. Thank you. Thank you, Tony. Mayor Sussens and members of City Council, on behalf of Michael Baker International, we're excited to be a part of this critical project for the city. I've lived in the city for 34 years. I came to the city to work on Virginia Beach projects. So I'm a trusted person that you can rely on to deliver this program, and I hope that was part of the decision-making that Public Works had. This stormwater program is very multifaceted. It will include numerous projects. It's very complex, primarily because it will be implemented in an already developed neighborhood setting, but also because it involves the combination of tidal flooding plus stormwater flooding. So, and in low-lying areas. So this is not a neighborhood stormwater project that is just solving periodic flooding of a small area or replacing aging infrastructure. It's much, much more. There are many challenges ahead. We've got the low ground elevations of the roads and buildings. The outfall channels are influenced by tides and sea level rise. Currently, there are undersized stormwater collection systems for today's needs. The high tides are resulting in significant reduction of stormwater capacity in the lakes, the canals, and the streets. And intense storm events are resulting in more frequent flooding and even property damage. But there are some solutions. We understand the complexities associated with flood resiliency in projects such as this. Design and construction of large-capacity stormwater pumping stations, coupled with barriers and tide gates to minimize the influence of tidal flooding, are highly likely in these areas. And the design, construction, and operation of these major pumping facilities of the size needed for this program are really a new chapter for the city. These are much larger than what you've implemented to date in any part of the city. This effort requires engineers with both depth and knowledge and hands-on experience. The Michael Baker and CDM team bring in-depth design expertise with these large pump stations and tidal barriers. As always, working within waterways, you've got to minimize the environmental impacts. And we've got to build a footprint or design a footprint that is as minimal disturbance to the environment as possible. This will help foster permitting actions in a timely manner. But it also means that we need to have early involvement with all regulatory stakeholders, and it'll be important to identify those regulatory issues and the potential mitigation approaches that are needed to mitigate any environmental impacts. We also recognize that construction in the existing neighborhoods can be quite impacting to the day-to-day activities of the city residents. Keeping residents continuously informed, maintaining access, both for public safety and for the residents, as well as keeping a safe, clean work area during construction, are critical objectives that we want to meet. In concert with the city leadership, we will help build awareness and advocacy within the community through focused meetings, public outreach, community meetings, and other media. And in regards to that public outreach and involvement, Mr. Warrenstaff will be heavily involved with that from our perspective. There are a number of key program objectives we have in moving forward. We are moving forward with early implementation projects. These are projects that can move forward immediately or in very short order. The city and our team are currently moving forward with many activities with a sense of urgency. As discussed by Tony, canal dredging projects are underway. There's a lot of maintenance and operation work going on with drainage inlets, storm drainage cleaning, and other activities. We're also advancing drainage infrastructure upgrades in areas where we can gain immediate localized benefits from giving flooding relief to smaller areas. These early implementation projects will be constructed in parallel with development of full-program prioritization. We're also advancing long-lead project development now. For example, we are determining and trying to determine the optimum location for pump stations and barriers along these creeks. The regulators certainly have a say in that, and it will take time. We know that regulatory permitting and property acquisition are critical path items on our schedule and for the program, and both are dependent on fixing the locations of these major hydraulic facilities. Another objective is to keep you and the city residents regularly informed of the program plan and progress through briefings such as this, civic association meetings, focused public meetings, any media use that we may use. We want the city leadership and the residents to be up to date with the ongoing project activities, including our progress, the active construction efforts, and then responses to any questions or concerns that they may have. Our end goals for the Lake Princess Anne Plaza and Windsor Woods neighborhoods are implementation of long-term solutions to mitigate the flooding in the project areas as soon as possible. We are rapidly developing the prioritized project sequencing plan and hydraulic analyses. These steps are critical to assure the combined infrastructure is practical, functional, permissible, and approvable. And at the end of the day, this step also helps us assure we are developing cost-effective solutions that are at the right time and in the right order. With that, I'm going to turn the floor over to Clarence to kind of close up our presentation. Clarence?
Thank you, Fred. Can we ask a question of you first, Fred? Jim Wood, I think we might as well ask Fred, please.
I've got a couple. I can wait till after Clarence.
Okay, go ahead, Clarence. Glad to see you up there again, sir.
Thank you very much, Mary Members of Council. It's a pleasure to be here today. I only have two slides.
That's unusual, from what I remember.
I've learned over the years. I wanted to talk about some, the team that we put together, along with past performance that this team and these companies have had with the city of Virginia Beach. I've listed a number of projects that really have been high-profile projects for the city. In many cases, this was the first type of project the city had had in those categories. I'm not going to talk about all five. I'm going to talk about my favorite project, the Lake Gaston Project. Michael Baker Engineers was retained by the city of Virginia Beach in the early '80s to work on the Gaston Project. It's in November 1982, the Virginia Beach City Council authorized the city manager to proceed with the project. Fifteen years later, almost to the exact date, November 97, we had ribbon-cutting ceremony. During those 15 years, the City Council of Virginia Beach made some courageous decisions. They exercised leadership. They kept the boat steering forward in light of lots of obstacles. Likewise, there were a lot of engineering challenges as well. Baker met those challenges and offered to the city innovative engineering solutions and cost-effective solutions. So it was a great team then, and it'll be a great team now. We look forward to working on this project, and we're very excited about it. One last thing about Gaston. January the 1st, just a few months away, you can celebrate 20 years of operation of the Gaston Project. A solid public infrastructure project that delivers quality service to this city every I want to talk a little bit about the resources necessary for this project. In our meetings with Public Works, we learned they wanted to select a team that had lots of resources. A team that could work simultaneously on numerous projects at the same time. In other words, lots of boots on the ground to get the job done. Additionally, they wanted to make sure that the team they selected had experienced engineers, educated, hands-on experience with large stormwater pumping stations and public infrastructure to block tidal flooding. We put together that team, and we were very fortunate that it had been selected. We are excited about it. So, do we have the capacity to do the job? Yes. Do we have a proven team? Yes. Have we demonstrated our accountability to the city in prior decades? Yes. Are we committed? We live here, too. We work here. It's our city. We're definitely committed to this project, and we will make it successful. I'll take a few minutes and talk, you mentioned public outreach earlier. In my 35 years of local government service, I kind of learned the hard way about public outreach. It is, it will be a critical part of this program. We need to keep our citizens and our residents informed. But I think the most important element of any public outreach is to listen. To listen to the citizens, identify their concerns, and work to resolve those. So we are excited about this project, and we look forward to working with the Public Works staff and with City Council. And with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Tony.
Thank you, Clarence.
Okay, so we'll take questions, and hopefully the team can...
Okay, we'll start with Jim Wood, please.
Thanks, and I appreciate the, all the detail that you all have provided, particularly, I was interested on the 1940s, 71-year-old map that shows that. But, so every time we've talked about this, you all have told us all along that if we have another Matthew, everything we've got planned is not going to be able to completely solve it. But then I kind of saw today the information from Michael Baker, which gives me a little bit more hope because talking about the massive pump stations and things like that. So I guess my question is, is are we going to be able to protect homes? And, you know, if we have to, if the, we don't want anything to flood, but if something has to flood, it should be streets rather than homes. So are we going to be able to do that with this?
That's the goal with this project, is to protect homes.
From a, another incident like Matthew, where you've got one storm, then another storm, and then a third storm coming in like that, are we going to be able to do that?
Well, I don't want to say that we can protect from a 500-year storm, because that's what Matthew was, was a 500-year storm. The goal with this project is to minimize flooding to three inches in the roadway. This is, these are some of the preliminary goals prior to our design analysis complete. But three inches at the crown of the roadway, which basically takes it to the top of the curb in the streets. And knowing that a lot of the elevations in the neighborhood are low, there are some areas that we may need to look at as far as what we need to do in the lower areas where that's not going to work. But the goal is three inches in the street.
So when we're talking about these big pump stations, are we talking about pump stations of the size of the ones at the north end or bigger than that?
Bigger than that.
Bigger than that. So those take up a significant amount of real estate.
Exactly.
So we're going to have to acquire real estate for these.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, the goal right now, that's what, that's why the engineering analyses are going to take some time. When you're planning a program of projects like this, and Mr. Wood, I'll get back to your first question. We like to do things, it's my expression, the bookend method. You have a do, a do-nothing alternative. You have, we will identify the solve-everything alternative. And we will identify all things in the middle, so that the budgets can be matched with the amount, with the amount of relief that can be feasibly supplied. Thinking now, getting to the pump stations, is that we will need at least three fairly major pump stations. One down by Lake Windsor to drain off towards Thalia Creek, and probably one on the north end of London Bridge Creek, and one on the south end. When you have elevations like seven in London Bridge Creek, and you have land elevations lower in this neighborhood, you have to pump. And same with on the north end. Baker's already been kind of brainstorming how to minimize the footprint of those and the impact of those. But again, that's going to come out of our analysis that we're doing now. I said, and we'll have a range, you know, from fix everything to, you know, there's always the do, the do-nothing alternative. We're kind of taking a sheet from the core of engineers and the way that they approach their projects. They run a series, series of design storms through. They rate, they identify a range of alternatives, and they present a balanced program that they think kind of blends the best of both.
So, and when you all are taking, this is my last question. So when you all are taking a look at these capital projects and doing the modeling and analysis, I assume that you are figuring, determining exactly where the water is coming that is inundating this particular street and this, these particular group of houses. So is, during your modeling and investigation of that, is there a method whereby you could identify a way in which your operations division could install temporary barricades in advance of storms, knowing that these things are going to be expensive to procure and hopefully we would never need, but perhaps is something that would be considered? I mean, because ultimately, again, if protecting the homes is the most important thing, even if we have to block a road to do it.
Certainly, that's something that we can look at. I mean, quite frankly, I hadn't thought of that before, but that's certainly something as we identify in the analyses, the areas that flood, are there temporary things that we can be doing? Like down in Asheville Park, we have temporary pumps at Sherwood Lakes. We're going to look at them in, at Lake Windsor, we could look at them in more isolated areas, too. See if they would, you know, help until we can get the full, the full program.
Okay, thank you.
I got John Moss, and then Barbara.
I'd like to go to Slide 11, at least our Slide 11, I'm not sure.
And is the study we're going to do going to assess how well the improvements we did put in, how they performed relative to what the engineering projection was at the time of their installation? Will be assessing how well they performed. And we did those drainage projects at Rosemont Road. We had a certain expectation of how they would perform. Are we going to look and see if, in fact, they delivered on the planned performance?
Most of those, we can, if we want to take the time and a little bit of expense. But most of those were not so much system-wide, fix-the-whole-problem-as-isolated-problem-solving project.
Well, I'm only, because as you read this and as it was conveyed in the context of the conversation, you would think they were more significant than what you just now conveyed. So now, if these were like patches on a flat tire, I got that. So I just want to make sure I understood the context of that. Okay, now I do. If we could, if I went through, I want to, when we remove cubic yards of drainage material, are we getting cubic yard per cubic yard of water storage?
No, this is returning those canals back to their original capacity.
So, so, so I guess that's another good important, because I was thinking, maybe I'm gaining something. But in fact, that since we didn't have this during the Matthews storm, so we are gaining back what we lost. And the reason why I'm asking, because if you look, there's roughly about 200 to 205 gallons in a cubic yard. You're roughly moved... You're roughly moving 30,100 cubic yards. So that's about, I think I calculated, it's about 6 million gallons of water. So if you looked at how we performed under Matthew, and if you had 6 million gallons more of storage from which runoff, how would that have affected the, the flood that you saw? Maybe none, maybe zero, but I think that'd be interesting to see if you had that 6 million of storage. Because people need to realize, an inch of rain on an acre is 27,000 gallons. So 13 inches is 600 and something thousand gallons of water on a single acre of property. That's a lot of water. So I, it gives people an idea of what we're talking about. So I think it would be interesting to know if we, when we buy that back, would, it might not meant everybody's home didn't flood, but it may be some areas where marginal, that it could have made a difference. It'd be interesting. I think the model would tell us that, right?
I was going to say, we're doing the modeling now, so...
And so when you look at these, and I like the idea about, because I've seen some ideas about protecting houses, the things you fill up with water at the bottom that form the occlusive seal with the ground that they put around people's homes even.
Yeah, but they're very expensive, and that's why I say it would be a capital expense.
Right, but not was, but if you look at the implication of $180 billion of damage in Texas, maybe it's who has to partner with us, as you say, Mr. Mayor, to help us get there. But it may be cheap insurance relative to the, to the loss. And I think that's the, the key. And as we're repaving streets, I guess we have the option to look at is, as that happens to lower the streets, to, if you can, where you can. If that's something you're all looking at, is where it makes sense, and you can lower the streets to create more capacity in the streets?
We'll be looking at lots of different alternatives.
That's especially true where houses are at the street. And many of those, as we see, are there. And I'm not saying do it right away, but as you're doing other things, if you had to replace sewer pipes, had to replace water pipes, the time came, that's just something to look at. I hope we will look at that. And I am very pleased to hear you aggressive, because I think we can do a lot of this stuff faster than, than 15 years. And everything I heard in this presentation suggests that that is possible, maybe not six, but maybe 10. But I do appreciate that you have appeared out of the confidence to push these at a much faster pace. I do appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Barbara.
I really do appreciate the overall context of, of where you are going and so forth. But going back to the initial discussion with Windsor Woods and Prince St. Plaiza and the lakes, I, I get the Dahlia Creek and the London Bridge Creek, but you're talking about Westneck Creek, too. Now, is that just because it's connected? But at what point is Westneck Creek the southern flowing, and which part of it is...
It actually comes up here from the south.
Yeah, yeah, no. That's what has me confused. When is, when does it stop being Westneck Creek? I mean, I know it connects all the way to Shore Drive, but we don't consider, talk, talk about it as being Westneck Creek. And where, where are the different dynamics? When does it start flowing south? When does it start going the other way?
It varies a little bit, but, but more or less at Dam Neck Road, but, but it varies depending upon storm. But, but you're absolutely right, Mrs. Henley. I mean, that's part of what you have to look at. That's why, you know, as much as we want to just jump out there and solve things, if you're going to build a big pump station on that end, you got to make sure you're not just transferring the problem on downstream to somebody else. So that, you know, has to be looked at hard.
Well, yeah, that's my concern, because as we talk about the southern part of the city and, you know, where the, where the water goes at various developments that we're talking about, you know, Westneck Creek just keeps popping up like we've got, you know, it's, it's no problem. But, you know, it's, it's pretty dynamic, and I, I just am concerned about how we, you know, make sure we're looking at everything.
We will make sure we look at that. And I mean, there's a lot of ideas floating around, too, that we haven't shared, like, I mean, we may have a lot more water hazards on Bow Creek Golf Course before we're done. You have to store water, so...
Well, thanks.
Shannon?
Thank you. I noticed on page 23, you've got timelines for projects going forward, et cetera. Move forward to the next page. There obvious, no, the other forward. 24, there you go. We don't have any kind of estimated timeframes there. I know, working through the budget this past season, we, we put in what we could, and we, we estimated on what we thought it might cost, not knowing what the engineering plans are. And knowing that we're going to start working on our budget in March again for next year, is, what is the, the timeframe that we think we may have the analysis kind of complete or have some kind of preliminary number so we can be fiduciarily responsible when we come to budgeting this year?
Our goal is to have this analysis complete by July of next year.
But, but I think we'll start having some answers. Some things are going to come out before that, too, for, for budgeting purposes.
I mean, that would certainly, I mean, I'm not saying hurry up because we've got to do it right, but what I'm saying is, it would be nice to know a little bit of, you know, 70% of what we're dealing with so that we can be smart when we are putting those numbers on paper next year.
Yeah, and if the previous slide did show the numbers that, that were already included in the six-year...
Right, right.
So, but I, I think we'll have some of the, some of the bigger improvements, especially we'll have, have a good idea of what we're doing. We might not know every 15-inch pipe. It needs to be an 18-inch pipe by March, but we'll know the big stuff that we have to do.
And I know that we obviously don't know what we're dealing with. You know, it's going to be opening Pandora's box, I'm afraid, when we start digging and, finding out what's under the ground from 50 years ago. But will we kind of have some kind of an estimate, maybe when this is complete, of an estimated timeframe, that maybe it is closer to the 10 years than the 15, et cetera? Will we know a little bit more of that then, or is that when we open Pandora's box that we figure that out?
No, I think that that's part of what we're doing now, is to come up with the program of improvements and the, and the implementation plan.
Okay, thank you.
John, you have something else? I'm sorry.
Going back, because I, I'm right, because of this, but I mentioned this, but I mentioned this before, I would, I know we talked about all these permitting things are in the critical path. I think the time could not be better, Mr. City Manager, to be engaging the people at state and at the federal level as we go along here. I would suspect that we would get ability to move at a quicker pace than what has traditionally been the, the case. And to the extent that that's six months in our timeline, and we can do it in parallel in the three, so we can create margin wherever we can, but I couldn't think of a better climate to be knocking on someone's door saying, would you rather have us fix this problem or have an emergency relief program, you know, which is cheaper? You know, look at this thing. Have to have the right science, understand all that. But we're talking about the time they take once they, they get it and all that, you know, digestive process, you know? Maybe they can get the yes, too. And I'm just saying, I think that the timing and the climate's right.
Jessica?
I just had a question on, when we're on the slide, for about Lake Windsor. Do we have any greater details on what we're looking at for Wake Lake Windsor? And if not, do we, are we planning on having another brief about the specifics of what we're going to be looking at?
We'll be briefing you again once the analysis is complete. We'll be back, actually, we'll probably be back, we're doing another presentation later this month on the whole stormwater program, and then we'll be back to brief you again when we have the analysis complete.
Thank you.
If you're getting any other questions or comments, I would just sit back and say, thank you all for your presentation. I would, I think we've all seen some great work done over the years, that it's made differences, but I still, and I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't want the public to ever think, though, that even with all this money and this excellent engineering going on, a bad hurricane comes in here, or something along those lines, water can still go in the houses. And I just, I think we must keep that point clear, that regardless, and we're making every effort to address stormwater to the best of our ability by having great people working and funding it. Still, a major storm, guess what? You spend all the money in the world, it doesn't do one bit of good for that storm. But I do thank you all very, very much.
Mayor, you're absolutely correct. We built Rosemont Forest on your direction and your endorsement, Mr. Dyer, and your district, and for about 16 weather events, it held the, held the test. But in Matthew, it was overcome. We had to shut it off because our lake was full, our ditches were full, and we were just cycling water, and it wasn't going to actually affect anything. So all engineering solutions have some maximum capability, solution capability that they deliver, and at certain points, you reach that.
Correct. Barbara?
Just, just a thought, and I guess maybe light bulbs go on at different times, and mine was just slow. But I guess with Clarence talking about the comparable with the Lake Gaston project, our, our stormwater, sea level rise, whatever we're calling all of this together, is sort of comparable to our water project in that we're, we're doing an all-encompassing, not just individual projects. And, and with all of this analysis that we're doing, because they do, and I think maybe that's where we have not done as good a job, because we have piecemeal things, but things really need to be in the overall scope of things.
A system.
A system, a total system. And so this is the way we present it to, to the public, so that we, we don't have people thinking in terms of, well, this neighborhood's getting this, and that neighborhood's getting the other, but that we are, we're doing the whole system. Is that...
Yeah, no, I definitely say that. And in the sea level rise presentation given a couple months back, the preliminary identification of, you know, there were about six areas that looked like they were going to be particularly affected by sea level rise, and this was one of those six. So I think that it is being, being integrated and looked at as a system.
We sure do. Thank you all. Have a good rest of the day. All right, we're now going to go to, for a SIPSA update. Where's Philip Short Term Davenport?
Right here, sir.
Yeah? What happened here? Well, Phil, since you made your announcements, the first time you've been up here in front of us, I'm going to tell you, we're going to miss you. You've done a heck of a great job for this city.
Well, I...
So don't screw up this last one.
Well, I appreciate it, and, and I was contemplating my decision yesterday as I was sitting on the beach, drinking a cold beer, and thinking, gosh, would it be nicer to be sitting in the office? And I kind of said, no, I don't think so.
We're happy for you.
Well, thank you.
Kind of jealous.
Yeah. So I'm going to be very quick and give you a, give you a little bit of, a little bit of background first on how we got to where we are, and, and quite frankly, we are in a very, very good place right now, I believe, with SIPSA. Looking at the background, our, our current agreement with SIPSA, which expires January 24th, 2018, we have a tipping fee of $125 per ton. And a lot of that is because we have a lot of debt at SIPSA that will be paid off by January 24th. So that's going to buy down the tipping fee quite a bit. As we go forward, we have what SIPSA is referring to as SIPSA 2.0, and that's January 25th, 2018, and beyond. And we signed, we, Virginia Beach, signed on to that agreement in May of 2016, and it has a nine-year lifespan on it. So that agreement expires June 30th of 2027. When we signed on to that, we expected, we all expected, that the tipping fee going forward, starting January 25th, would be $65 per ton or less. In discussions with City Council, there were several conditions that we, the staff and City Council all thought were very important for Virginia Beach in re-signing up with SIPSA. One was that we have a long-term solution, at least a 50-year solution. We knew that if we could get SIPSA to try to get a CUP with the City of Suffolk to expand into landfill cell seven, that we would have at least that much capacity. That has been done. We, we have that, that CUP now approved by the City of Suffolk. At the staff level, we always thought that the best option going forward would be to landfill all of the SIPSA waste. I still believe that to be true, and that's where we're probably going to end up. Again, resolving the issues with, with cell seven, and the City of Suffolk and, and SIPSA have come to that agreement, and the CUP has been approved by the Suffolk Council. As part of that, Suffolk wanted to have what they call a good neighbor agreement. They're going to, they're going to be paying the same tipping fee as all of the other members of SIPSA, which is different than today. Today, they don't pay a tipping fee, but they get free disposal at their landfill, and they host the landfill. So that's kind of the, the trade-off there. Going forward, they will pay the same tipping fee as the rest of us, but the good neighbor agreement means that for every ton that goes into that landfill, Suffolk will get $4 per ton. So if you look at the amount of waste that the SIPSA municipalities put into the, the landfill, it's about 375,000 tons per year. And if you look at that, their, their agreement would pay them about $1.5 million from the municipalities. There will be additional waste that goes in from commercial haulers, private haulers. They will still pay that same $4 tipping fee. And we, we thought we needed to accommodate in some fashion the commercial waste. SIPSA was going along a path where they were not planning to accommodate commercial waste. That's a big part of what we have in Virginia Beach. We thought it was important, and we now have some accommodation through the SIPSA agreement for that. And with that, commercial haulers will be able to use the SIPSA transfer stations. They will then pay SIPSA for transporting waste, and they will have a tipping fee that comes off of that. That exact number is still to be determined, but it will be more than cost beneficial. So looking, going back in time just a little bit, back in 2015, there were a lot of people in the SIPSA community who thought they did not want to put things in the landfill. They wanted to come up with a different solution. And RFP went out on the street back in 2015, and there were three responses from Repower South, Republic Service, and Wheel Ebrider. And if you take the, the cost that they submitted in their bid, and then add to that the amount of fees that SIPSA has on top of that for the transfer stations, for hauling waste, and for other parts of the SIPSA business, the numbers you see up here, the numbers you see up here were the, where am I there? I'm sorry. The numbers you see up here were the, the proposed tipping fees back in 2015.
I knew it wasn't that.
The City of Virginia Beach asked SIPSA to put in an extra calculation for what would it cost if they just landfilled everything, and that's the 5737 that you see. Based on these numbers, SIPSA made the decision to enter into a contract with Repower South, because that was the lowest-cost provider at the time. A lot of us were pretty skeptical about that, and we, we weren't sure that Repower was actually going to be able to produce what they said they could. Nonetheless, we entered into a contract, we, SIPSA, entered into a contract with Repower South, May 25th, 2016. There were three deliverables that they were required to meet by January of 2017. One was that they have all of their required permits in place, another that they have an offtake agreement for all of the pellets that they were going to produce to, to burn in, in power plants, and another was financing. The offtake agreement that they had proposed all along was going to be with Virginia Power, and that seemed to be a little bit shaky from the beginning. Within the last month or so, it completely fell apart, and at the last meeting of SIPSA, the people from Repower South said, we don't have an agreement with Virginia Power. We're not going to get one. We're looking for some other places. And it was going to be far less pellets, and they were going to recover their costs through more of a recycling than a, a making pellets-type program. The same time, there are... The same time, their ability to get financing was falling apart. They had gone completely to non-rated financing. They were having trouble coming up with the amount of capital that they needed. So, you know, this is not something you guys haven't heard before with other people. So, you know, we know how this works.
Thanks, Phil.
So the bottom line is Repower was unable to provide any of their deliverables. And at the last meeting in August, the SIPSA board voted to terminate the contract. That termination letter was issued on August 23rd. And that puts us now back to the SIPSA landfill as our option. Again, this is where we in Virginia Beach thought we would always end up and kind of hoped we would end up there. So I showed you some budget numbers earlier that back in 2015, SIPSA had indicated it would be somewhere around 5737 if we were to just landfill everything. But here we are a couple of years later. And at this point, we don't have an exact number, but we're thinking the tipping fee will turn out to be somewhere in the $58, $59 range. So looking at 59 as a reasonable budget number. The way we budgeted in the FY '18 year, for the first seven months, $125 per ton. And then for the last five months of the year, 65. If on January 25th, 2018, we go down to $59 a ton, we have a potential savings of about $345,000. That's based on the Virginia Beach waste stream of about 138,000 tons. In FY '19, if we continued with 138,000 tons and we had continued at $65 per ton, that would have been $8.9 million. At $59 a ton, we have a potential savings of about $828,000. Don't spend that money yet, though, because we have some things that we are underfunded for. When the Enterprise Fund was created, it was a little bit underfunded. And we are still trying to catch up with some of that. We've had some things that the General Fund has had to supplement our Waste Management Fund with. We have a landfill in particular that we are continuing to pay to operate. It's a couple million dollars a year. That has been funded mostly by the General Fund for the past few years. And we would like to try to get that over to the Waste Management Fund eventually. We have some equipment capitalization that we need to do. We are trying to get all of our waste management equipment on a 10-year replacement cycle. That's still above the about seven-year replacement cycle that most of the private haulers have. But we take pretty good care of our stuff, and we think we can squeeze out a couple more years. We have a reserve fund that is way below what it should be right now. Our reserve is less than a half a percent. So, you know, we really need to work on beefing that up. Right now, we have a policy of when carts wear out and they have some age on them, people have to pay for a new cart. At some point, we would like to at least consider the option of having cart replacements on a, we pay for it all. That's not a definite, but it is something that we need to consider. And we have some recruitment issues right now that we are trying to work on. And believe it or not, it is very, very difficult to find qualified truck drivers. We are working with the Human Resources Department now to try to develop a program where we will in-house hire people, train them up to get a CDL license. And then we'll actually pay for their licensing. We think that will help a little bit. But we also know that the City of Norfolk had similar problems. And they, within the last year, have increased the pay for their top-level drivers that are equivalent to our Waste Management Operator threes and fours, to where there's about a $5,000 to $7,000 gap between what we're paying and what Norfolk is paying. So, you know, we think we need to try to close that gap a little. So with that, if there are any questions?
We have Jim Wood first.
Thanks. Phil, what is the impact of, the cost impact to the city, if any, if somebody puts trash in the recycle can? Do we get billed for that?
We do not get billed for it right now. There's an assumed amount of bad waste, contaminated waste, that will go in the blue cans. That is always going to be an issue. We know that, and it's probably going to become more of an issue. The biggest consumer of recyclables is China right now. And they are getting much more stringent on what they will allow in. And if you talk to people like Michael Benedetto, they are paying huge fines for shipping contaminated goods. China is actually opening pallets when they arrive at the docks. And if there's too much contamination inside them, they're either putting them back on the boat or they're charging extra money for them. So that may become an issue in the future, but right now, it has not.
So, well, that kind of leads me. I was at a social event this weekend, and I talked to somebody who worked for the City of Newport News. And he works in the Waste Management Division there. And he talked about their tipping fees. And it seems like their tipping fees are significantly less than what we're projecting here. And I'm curious as to that. And then there was another thing interesting. This morning, I was reading about the smart city initiatives. And they talk about how garbage trucks are following certain routes and detecting whether or not cans are full enough to be picked up and then whether or not they should deviate their routes on different days, which was kind of an interesting thing to me, just trying to figure out if that could actually work in a city like ours. But it was just kind of a fascinating thing where they weighed the different cans, saying, well, maybe this street is once every two weeks, but this street needs to be twice a week or that sort of thing, based on the volume. But I'm curious, is why, and apparently Newport News does something like that, why is their tipping fee so much less than ours?
I think it's their landfilling costs that they have over in that area. They're just cheaper.
Apparently, they have a regional landfill that they use over there as well.
Yeah, it's cheaper.
Several cities and counties use that?
Yeah, it's cheaper landfilling.
And there's nothing that we can do to?
I can't make SIPSA's cost any cheaper. SIPSA has a lot of capital costs. And, you know, SIPSA has done a lot of things to control their costs. I think they have other things they can do to lower some of their costs. But I don't know that we'll get down as low as what they are in Newport News.
It's a SIPSA issue, okay, thank you.
Sheena?
Yes, two questions. One, is the contaminated waste, is that at the 25%? I noticed that most RFPs kind of have that cut off at a 25% contaminated waste number.
That's what ours is as part of our contract. But, you know, hopefully, we will never approach that number. You know, I think we're always going to be far less than that.
Got you, and you, thank you. And you mentioned the challenge in hiring and getting good drivers and all of that. Have we ever put out an RFP to third-party this and make it a non-city employee function?
No, we have not.
But we did a massive study. We pulled over 200 different jurisdictions and took a look in cost compared, what they deliver, what the cost per ton, what the cost per monthly household was, what is the response rates once you go privatized. We also believe that one of the reasons why you're one of the cleanest cities in America is because we don't restrict what the weekly pickup. We encourage people to sort properly, both in the blue cans and the black cans. We pick up yard waste unencumbered. We do have restrictions on number of bags in our four-foot by four-foots, but we are the most lenient staff. We really get out there and do it. And if any of the council members call, we respond. We have loopback trucks. We have route supervisors that know everything about their street. We have cameras in our vehicles that are able to look and see. So when we actually pull up to a house, we know whether that person really had his can out or not. We have a private conversation with them when they sleep in and forget to get their cans out. But we don't have dumping in parks. We don't have dumping on the side of the road. When that happens, that's almost a rarity, and it's reported, and we go get it. And so I know that we could probably chase a few dollars on the end, but the cleanup and the backtracking and trying to pull it out of your parks, it would be so much more expensive. And having come from Prince William County and know what the cost personally up there is, and having done a massive spreadsheet by both Management Services and Waste Management to determine that, I fully believe that you have great control over your waste management stream right now.
I'm not questioning the quality. I just meant if it's really challenging to get the personnel, maybe that's an answer.
And I would also say that over the last five or six years, through just efficiencies in routing, efficiencies in equipment purchases, and extending the hours that our operators are working a little bit, we have reduced something like about 40 positions out of our waste collection staff.
Okay, we've got Jessica, then John Moss.
This, what is the average wage on the CDL drivers right now? Do you know that number off the top of your head?
If you, you know, we have pay ranges. Our highest levels, the Waste Management Operator fours, for the most part, they're making somewhere around the $40,000 mark. If you get down to the threes, they're about 5% to 10% less than that. The twos and the ones are a little bit further behind.
You're saying Norfolk is 5,000 to 7,000?
Norfolk's about 5,000 more on the Waste Management Operator threes and about 7,000 on the fours.
The other question I had following up that, is there a program through VOTEC to get kids graduating high school, out of high school their CDL? Is that a potential avenue?
Well, that's something we can look at. I don't know whether there is or not.
I'm just, I know-
I don't know that there is right now, but it's something we can look at.
Yeah, I mean, I've been talking to a lot of people coming in the next couple of years who are graduating, and their challenge is with finding jobs is, I mean, I know a couple of people who have their CDL. It's a, I mean, 40,000 isn't, you know, maybe the high end of what you want to make, but that's not the end of the world either. I mean, considering what jobs are paying now.
Right.
Yeah.
And they're not on the road, they're home every night.
Yeah, exactly.
And, you know, we have this problem with drivers, but we have it with all of our skilled positions. You know, we're having a lot of trouble with skilled positions.
John?
I'm just curious, when you compare the private sector, what, you know, if you look at the various people that have Waste Management or whatever, what are they paying? And when you discount for, they don't offer defined benefit pensions. They generally don't pay anything on family health insurance. When you look at the total compensation package, where do we line up relative to productive hour work, relative to wage? I think that you have to, because obviously, they should be having those same problems. Are they? And I'm just always interested how the private sector, who's having to hire that very same skill. And I do know that because if you can't have a domestic violence conviction, you can't have a DUI, you can't have a felony conviction, or you can't get the CDL license. Well, all these things narrow down the market for the eligible population. So that's a problem for trucking companies. And they realize they can't always pass that cost on to consumers?
Right.
Because their consumers won't pay it. So they have other things. So I just think we need to always be, put things in the proper context and might have to look for things other than how they're solving those when they can't price, pass that price on.
And we have done, we have done a little bit of comparatives with the private sector. Some of them that really don't have much trouble are ones that pay incentives for harder work, more performance. And, you know, that's not something we're set up to do very well. I'd love to be able to get there. But, you know, if we could do pay-for-performance on it, that would work great.
My other question was, what is the normal bet? I mean, I think reserves are always critical. You never know when things are going to go. You can overdo reserves, obviously.
Sure.
But if you looked across your industry where the government is the provider or even the private sector is 3%, you know, generally, you don't see many people go over 5 for anything.
Right.
Because it ties up capital. But what is, you know, what are we, do we have a goal we're trying to shoot for? You're not the answer here, bud.
I think, yeah, I think if you were to ask our finance department, they would say, really, we need to be somewhere around 10% or more. So, but what I do know is that half a percent is not adequate.
I'm with you there. And the point about recycling, as many people follow the industry, that has really fallen on hard times, the value of recyclables because of the fall in commodity prices. I mean, the prices have really fallen, and many of these places are not doing well.
That's what happens with commodities.
To landfill. And so I just think we always need to, I think, I've always said, if you look at recycling from an economic perspective, the blue cans are not a moneymaker. So, and just like we're doing landfill versus burning recycle, because it doesn't make money and it's a cost. And you just have to ask yourself, at what point is the cost we're paying worth the social conscience we think we're gaining when the result is there's no market for the recycled goods? And I know you have to look at that. You just can't make a decision today. You've got to look over time. But it does talk about, we have to just make sure when someone says, let's spend more money on recycling, to really look at where the marketplace is on recycling. And right now, it's in a very, not such a good place.
And what I, the only thing I would add to that, and this is not an argument, I'm just adding to what you've just said, is that the way we pay for disposal of what goes in our black cans is a tipping fee per ton. The way we pay for what goes in the blue cans is based on a cost per household. And it's whether the can goes out on the street or not, and regardless of how much material goes into the can. So everything that we can divert out of the black can, as long as it's legal, everything we can divert out of the black can into the blue can is a cost savings on our disposal fee.
I agree for today's methodology. But as the pricing of those values turn down, the people who do that aren't going to live with losing money. And my last thing was, can you refresh us where we are with all this toxic waste that they're having to deal with? The liquid at the landfill that they have to draw down and dispose of that had a cost?
Sure.
Where do we stand with that? And how is that cost being distributed?
Yeah, actually, the leachate issue is almost solved. And you may recall that at one time, the leachate was at about 30 feet in one of the cells and not quite as much in the other cell. And quite frankly, nobody knew because the SCADA system that had been installed at SIPSA had not operated for about 10 or 12 years. And they, for whatever reason, nobody brought that to the board to have it replaced or anything done with it. They were not pumping as much leachate out of the cells as they could have. And even what they could have been pumping out was not as much as they needed to pump out. So what they did was they went to a combination of raising the amount they were pumping out to get it to the maximum allowed, and then doing a pump and haul where they were actually hiring tanker trucks to come in and get the leachate and take it to different HRSD plants for processing. So they've been doing that for a while, and they will continue doing that for a while. They do have a new SCADA system that is being installed now. It will take several months before that's in. They greatly overestimated how bad the problem was. And it's not nearly as bad. It was never as bad as what they thought it was. And that's why they've been able to get it pumped down as quickly as they have. They are now within legal limits. They are now within legal limits, so it's just a matter of maintaining those legal limits. They have spent some money on doing that, but money that they spent was all in the current year budget. And I don't, John, do you know how much money they spent? Or do we have the final account?
The whole project right now looks like it's going to be about $3.6 million. Where it was originally estimated at over $10 million.
I remember that, that's why I was asking.
Right.
One time there was going to be a charge back to localities, and that's why I was asking.
Right. So I think we're through that now.
Any other questions or comments to Phil and John? We've been talking about, you know, the work of y'all's employees, and I would sit back and say that I get very, very, very few complaints about cans being missed, and I think everyone at this table can sit back and say that because of the great job they do. And in addition, we have a pretty clean city because of the great job they do. So I say it on behalf of the council and the citizens, your department is, does a first-class job. We're very proud of them. Thank you. All right. The next Cavalier Shores residential parking permit program. Ron, you going to take this on?
Yes, sir. I've asked Rob Freese to join me to give you a little bit of background. This is under your ordinances, item 1A. We'll go over that. But first, I've asked Rob to remind us about the program, how it functions, and its current status.
Thanks, Ron. Good afternoon. All right. In general, this program has been around since the early 90s. It was originally where it's at right now. It basically goes from 30th Street and it stretches down to Winston-Salem. The restriction as we know it now, it starts at 8:00 p.m. and lasts until 6:00 a.m. in the morning every day. Obviously, it's more, you know, more of a prevalent issue during a peak season than it is in the wintertime. We do enforce it. The parking management office does the lion's share of enforcement, mainly April through October. And the police will also do enforcement on special weekends, heavy weekends, when they anticipate large crowds, and during the offseason. Here's kind of a current map as we know it. It's, obviously, it's looking towards the east, the south end here, you know, to your, to the right is Winston-Salem, and it goes all the way up to 30th Street. And by and large, this has really been the, mainly the limits since its inception, since the early 90s. It really hasn't changed much. I think maybe a few have come in here and there since then, but not a lot. Purpose of the program is, is pretty simple. Really, it's, you know, it's to alleviate traffic congestion late at night, to protect residents from excess noise. You know, they're the only place in the, you know, probably in a state that, you know, backs up to, you know, a resort community or resort area. It tends to be pretty festive at night, and the residents, you know, want the quietness and the peace at night, so we have this program. It does, you know, protect them from those unwanted burdens, such as loud noise and loud radios and people hooting and hollering at all nights and all hours of the night. The objective is one for the RPP in general is, you know, what, if you recall that map, you know, you can see most of these areas are very contiguous, like a, you know, a very tight area where there's no leapfrog areas, like your neighbor's in, but this guy's out, you know, you're in, but across the street's out. So we, over the period since the early 90s, we've maintained that, you know, we wanted to keep it kind of tight and contiguous. We wanted to maintain that program continuity. One thing, you know, it eases enforcement, so you know, as the enforcement officers are patrolling, they know where they're in and where they're out. But more importantly, more than anything, it's for the public to know, you know, where it is and where it's not, because the last thing we're trying to do is really trap anybody. We try to sign it, let them know where it's at. And so when they're contiguous and tight that way, they have a reasonable expectation of knowing, you know, where they're at. And so that's kind of the idea of, you know, what we have maintained over the last 25 The policy in general, if you're, if you want to become a part of the program, you have to be located within a half mile of a parking meter. And if you're new coming in, we're asking at least 75% of the parcel owners residing in that neighborhood to agree. What we really didn't want is to create kind of a 50-50 situation where half the people for it and half of them against it. We didn't feel that that was a great policy for neighborhoods. We really wanted a strong support from the neighborhoods to be a part of this program. And when you do this, you know, we want the petition to explicitly state the reasons of, and why you're in, you know, what the program's about, so they know everything, you know, the restrictions, you know, the permit types, the permit numbers, how you get them. So that includes, you know, in all the petitions that has gone out. And lastly, we definitely want, again, I can't say this enough, is that we want it to be, you know, the boundaries to be contiguous, so you know exactly where the area is. The permits in general, as you know it now, it's basically, if you're a resident, you get four decals a year. They go on your car. You can get two guest passes a year, two annual guest passes, and up to 10 temporary passes per week. And they basically have a duration of 72 hours. And then businesses who are located within the boundaries of that district, who have employees that work after 8:00 p.m., they're allowed in and they pay about $10 a month. You must be a pre-approved business before that's allowed. You have to show us, you know, that you're a responsible business by giving us a business license before we allow you in. Here's just kind of a graph of previous violations that we had since, what, 2005? You can see it's multicolored. The red graphs show that what the fine was previously, it was $35. In 2014, at the request of the Civic League and some stakeholders, they wanted to get a little bit more control in this area, and they raised the rates up to $70. In some cases, in some weekends, major weekends, you know, prior to increasing the rates, it was, sometimes it might have been cheaper to get the parking ticket in the neighborhoods than to pay some of the going rates in the private lots, you know, depending on the demand. So that really helped a lot there.
Do you tow, or you just give them a ticket?
The parking management office will give them a ticket. The police department has, is the only one who has the authority to tow. And sometimes what they'll do is, during these major weekends, they will follow our guys, and when they see a ticket on the car, they will follow up and tow. Our stats show in general, which I guess is good news, is that the people who get these tickets, at least 80% of them have Virginia plates. So it's not a lot of folks out there who are, you know, tourists that are getting these tickets. It's mainly Virginians, and it's very well signed. There's probably at least 600, 700 signs in that whole area. So it's very well signed. And now Ron will come and walk you through the new request.
Thank you very much, Ron. We welcome you back.
Okay, Mayor, Council, since, really, probably in earnest since November, City Manager's Office, SGA Office, has been working with the Cavalier Shores neighborhood. They are a neighborhood that is eligible for the program as it exists today. They're within the quarter-mile radius of a meter. The ordinance that you had this evening is requesting a defined area of the south side of 45th Street, the north side of 42nd, and then essentially from Holly Road to Ocean They did submit their request for admittance to the program. They had 97 sign the petition, which is well over the 75%. They have included two additional items that are not in the existing ordinance code as we have it. They asked at the time, rather than an 8:00 p.m. start, be at 5:00 p.m., and then that no employee or business permits be allowed in the program. That's pretty much the skinny of it. We did have, we do have some concerns, mostly because of the consistency of the program as it's been, as Rob described, looking at its continuity, looking at its contiguous streets. We don't have a problem on the streets there, but it is the change in the time that can be precedent-setting, that perhaps other neighborhoods might want the same time, that then could have a ripple effect on what some of the benefits of the program are, which is, we can have a balance of beachgoers during the day, we have a balance of employees being able to use the program, but then residents can still enjoy the quiet evening. So that's our only concern with that. Otherwise, we would support their adoption into the program, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments? Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
So that is the main benefit of this RPP program is just what you said. I mean, that's why I was sent to you.
Well, from my understanding, and having lived there a couple of times now, yeah, the balance between the enjoyment of the public, understanding that we do have limiting, limited, a certain number of limited parking spaces, 7,000 at the oceanfront, and so that the streets during the day provide that additional capacity to handle beachgoers during the day, yes.
Roseberg?
So really, the only business that is changing things would be the opening of the Cavalier. Is that correct?
Correct, or the redevelopment. Yes, ma'am. Yes.
And so, does Mr. Thompson use this program for any of his hotels, or has he indicated that he's going to use it?
We've reviewed the participants that have the business permits, and no one from Gold Key currently uses the program, no, ma'am.
Do they have any intentions of using its program?
They have not expressed that to us when we asked, no.
And he has told me personally that he would sign a document saying that he does not intend to take you up on the RPP.
So he'll sign a document that says he's not going to use this program?
That is correct.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right, City Council Liaison Reports. What do we have? We have none. That's good. Well, not good, but anyway, thank you. City Council Comments? Yes, ma'am.
Especially watching what Houston has gone through, and there isn't any scene that you see with the people suffering that they're not involved with their pets. You know, you're seeing the people being rescued, and they've got their dogs and their cats. And there are a lot of people who would not leave their homes because they were not going to leave their dogs behind. And I think Norfolk has a shelter where they'll take their pets. And I don't think that we have accommodations for any of that. And it's kind of, you know, your pets really are part of your family. They really are. And I think a lot of people are not going to leave if they have, they, I would have a lot of trouble leaving my Charlie behind. And you'd have trouble leaving Sparkle behind, wouldn't you? I would really like for us to look at our shelters and to see if we can make accommodations for people to bring their pets if they have to go through a shelter for a storm.
Can you let us know what's available down the road, please?
We have something in place now.
I thought we had the Animal Control Center.
Yeah, we've got, we've got pet-friendly shelters, and we've, Bob and I have been working on this family control advisory board, and he caught me cold, so I don't, I don't remember the exact details.
Didn't Harry Dizell, when he was on, have, you know?
We'll get David Lewis an update of the facts.
Just get the Dizell and work on, you know.
So we do have it.
Yes, ma'am.
But if, I don't know about, maybe our citizens don't know about it either.
Okay, any other comments? Yes, sir?
One, I'd like to get feedback from the Development Authority on the new conflict of interest procedures they've put in place to avoid us having the kind of embarrassing situation that we had. I know they, they're doing something new, but I'd like to know what it is new that they're doing.
I haven't heard the beginning of it yet.
The new conflict of interest review procedures that the Development Authority has put in place to avoid the error in judgment, so that we don't have that embarrassing situation. And I know there, I'd like to know what that is.
Do we know? We haven't had a meeting.
Okay, we got Dave, he'll get that back to us.
I would think, I'd like, I think we would like to get a copy of that new executive order. I think that would be worth the council people looking at. Last week, you know, we got the discussion on pension unfunded liabilities. I just want to let staff know I followed up, count my period, I followed up on that because the unfunded liability this year is greater than last year. It grew by a significant amount despite the catch-up payments. So I asked the staff if they could show us from near 2000 to now, how much the outstanding unfunded liability was in each year, and how much the catch-up payment was, and is that delta growing, or was that an aberration? But it looks like.
Was that because of investment return?
Well, I don't know, but I went back and looked at several bond reference, and my point is, even with the amortization, we're not reducing the liability, the liability has actually grown. And I just think that people should be aware of that, because that has its own implications. If it's a trend, it may not be. That's why I'm asking for the data over time. Just want you to know. I was reviewing the HRSD initiative, you know, putting the groundwater back in, which I think is a good thing. And one of the things is, it may be a $1 billion capital expenditure, which we showed in the HRSD rates. But there was the comment from staff that that wouldn't impact the city because HRSD collects it. That's true, but guess what? The city and HRSD shares the same people who pay it. So I think we need to be sure we understand from a customer point of view, the total liability on citizens, it's not the liability on the city. I just thought that was something we overlooked. There was a recent article in the Wall Street Journal talking about a sign of improving the economy was a significant reduction in SNAP benefits. And I'm just curious if at the city level, we're seeing that same trend line in reduction in SNAP participants? That should be something easily to get. And commensurate with that, when we get the October report or November, the five-year forecast, if the school could update us on the number of students on free or reduced lunch, because I think that would be helpful. And I noticed also that several communities, New York City is one of them, are taking an assessment, and this should, I think should be regional, so not be something for the regional do versus just us as a city, are looking and said, if we had a light rain event in Hampton Roads versus just Virginia Beach, what would that look like and how would we respond? And one thing that got my attention was, even now, the sewer pump stations in Houston is an issue. So can we, or does it make sense for that core infrastructure, to make that core infrastructure truly waterproof? I know we're doing that for that system that's on Witch Duck Road, I mean, Kennesville Road, that interchange, we're making that big thing waterproof. But over time, would we look at our most vulnerable pumping stations? And would it be worthwhile to make those waterproof and adjust them so even when bad flooding takes place, we're not injecting fecal contamination into water and have a public health risk? That might take a long time to do, but that could be a long-term preventative thing, and it's only limited infrastructure, and there may be federal grants for that. That's all.
Thank you, Josh. Yes, sir.
This past Wednesday, we hosted Dr. Mark Hoyt from North Carolina State University, who is the architect of the North Carolina Next Generation Network, which is a public-private partnership between Duke University, North Carolina State, UNC, and Wake Forest and their corresponding municipalities, along with a private internet service provider. The program or consortium that they built down there has been wildly successful, attracting three new internet service providers in the past two years. And we believe, working regionally with our neighbors, both on the south side and the peninsula, that we can create a very similar consortium here, which is the genesis for Dave Hansen's presentation on our Go Virginia application. And so it was a wonderful meeting. It was attended by all 17 municipalities, and everybody seems very enthusiastic about it.
Keep up the good work. We're proud of you.
Good job, man.
Proud of you. Other comments? I've got, yes, sir?
Yeah, one quick thing. I was at lunch the other day on Cleveland Street at a very famous hot dog place. A couple of us have hung around. And we walked out and there was a huge pothole in front of the place. And the gentleman I was having lunch with took a picture of it, sent it in, and Mr. Hansen, it was repaired the next day, you know, by the photo thing. So I just want to give compliments.
It's a 10 on your side, it's Bobby Dyer on your side.
Any other questions, any other comments? I've got to give a shout out to the Rock and Roll Half Marathon. I was there both mornings early, I had to start it, and I even participated in the 5K. But my point being, to go by and see what it takes to get this thing going early. As a matter of fact, I saw your wife in the command center, the rescue squad.
Good at commanding.
Yeah. I hope she's listening on that one. Maybe I hope she isn't. But to see what the job the police were doing, EMS were doing, Public Works was doing, Centerra, they set up a triage in Station 14 where that, they can take them there prior to going to the hospital if it's not life-threatening. And then the volunteers. You know, I could not believe the number of ambulances involved, I could not the number of ambulances involved. I could not believe the number of police officers involved, the volunteers involved, and it just appeared to go smoothly. So a shout out to everybody that participated in that. It was first-class.
So she told me also that Homeland Security was there evaluating our response, and said that we had above what other states have done.
Well, I'll take it a step further. I was talking to, regrettably, ownership of this race has changed numerous times since it started. But the first time that this race came here, we have a volunteer rescue squad. And they said, hey, volunteers aren't going to, yeah, this isn't going to cut it. The guy that owned the race came to me that evening after the race and said, we're taking you as a model, and going to take it across the country on the way. Our volunteers did the job. And now, as Jim, I'd heard the same thing, what they're doing with the triage and so forth is something that's the model for the race. And this race is international. It's not just across the country. It's overseas as well. But thanks for bringing that up, Jim. Great point. Yes, sir.
Mayor Sessions, I forgot one thing in my comments, and the main point of the comment was to thank City Manager Hansen and Norfolk City Manager Doug Smith for attending the meeting.
I'll thank Hansen. I don't know. I'll thank Doug. Okay, let's do the agenda review, please.
All right, under ordinances and resolutions, so...Anybody have any comments on any of them?
You got my abstentions.
I got your abstentions.
Thank you, sir.
Louis, I think we'll probably have to hear 1A.
Okay.
Oh, I want to ask a question about the Adopt a Drain program. Jessica, I think it's a lovely idea. But there was mention in there about the budget impact. We didn't know what it was. Dave, do you have any idea?
I thought we already had it.
No, when I talked to Rod about it, he said that they were including that, that they would be brought back to council if there was a budget impact.
When Navy River now, see, you can get on your drain thing if you do something.
I knew we did have something somewhere.
You can get on your drain, but that is unique to the Liva Haven watershed.
All right, great.
There's not, this would just be advising staff to create...
And just for Council's information...
Determined to meet expectations, but no, I don't have a budget line item. And, you know, it would be something that we would want to utilize our stormwater fees to, or general fund fees to support, depending on what that program is. I can't give you an answer right now. We need to work on it.
Should we know what the program is, to have an idea of what it's going to cost before we lay on it?
Well, I can't commit funds without coming back to you.
Well, I believe Jessica said she doesn't want any funds spent. She just would like to go this route. And that's your intent?
Well, my intent with the resolution was to give direction to staff to come back to council with that.
Great, great.
I want to discuss 9E. We can just discuss it. I don't know how long we have for this to be discussed outside, but I went back and just use 1 as an example of planning. Planning under-executed their budget. This is on page 1 of 2, under 9E, it'd be page 1, 2, 3, page 4 of the actual agenda item. And this, I can give other examples as well. But, so they under-executed their budget by 1.3 million dollars. And so here is something that is a very small amount of money, $196,650 relative to 1.3 million, not a huge amount, because they consistently, over time, under-execute. So I know one of our goals was to look for opportunities where we could to find money, that could additionally, money that could go towards flooding. So if people consistently under-execute their budget over time, and the amount being asked here is for something like building renovations, I don't know why in the budget that we just appropriated that they will under-execute, they can't absorb that cost, and why those money shouldn't be...I understand the projects aren't new. I understand all that. This is the principle of people consistently under-execute, and we take money that could be held still in reserve or the surplus, and let's see if they, in the end, don't under-execute. We can fix those at the end. This is, to me, not the way we should budget. And then you can look at radios, $2 million for radios. Now, you could say, in an enterprise account, any money that they don't execute, I think we probably put in their surplus account. I would think that's probably true. That's where that ends up. So if we didn't do this, they would have $2 million in their surplus account, and we would then be appropriating stuff rather than a carryover. The books would have closed. We would come in forward with the request to spend $2 million of the surplus versus a carryover from the prior budget. I just think, I just have problems with the mechanics by which this is done, and some of these amounts are just really small. And here's one, the Convention and Visitors Bureau. When I read the description, this is anticipation of the impact during the construction of the arena. Well, I don't know about you, but I think we might be a long way from when that starts. And so therefore, why are we moving money when the events that would cause the expense to take place haven't even been consummated, but yet we're moving the money in advance of the requirement? And I'm just going by what I got from staff. So I just have some concerns about the fidelity. I'm not voting for this, not because I don't, I guess I could divide legally the vote into a lot of different votes, because I can do that.
So 9E, you're voting no.
No, because, and not because I'm not in favor of the police pieces, but this is like an omnibus bill in Congress that people talk about, where they throw everything in the kitchen sink in there, and people don't want to vote no for something, so they vote yes for things they shouldn't. So knowing that it's going to pass, I'm voting no, but if people prefer, we can go through and I don't want to go there and vote on each item.
9E?
No, it's on 9E, though, is that correct?
Yes, that's that $3 million. But this is bad management.
Okay, so, Mr. Vice Mayor, if I'm going to, if you'll double-check me, 1A we will hear. 6, I'm abstaining. 7B, I am abstaining. And 7E, I am abstaining. And then 9E, no for Mr. Moss. Are we on?
6, you're abstaining. 7D, you're abstaining. 7E, you're abstaining. And, okay.
9E, no.
I noticed that Mr. Bradley was up there to make comments. Did you want to make any particular comments on any of these that were highlighted? Is there a...
I was just going to say, just generally, part of the carry forward, part of the issue is, we do control by categories in the budget. So we control by salaries and fringe benefits, and we also control by operating accounts. So in this case, this is money that would be carried forward in operating accounts. So there may not be as much money there, and part of the surplus that's there in each of the years is because this money wasn't spent. And, you know, for instance, the trolleys, they're not going to spend that money unless, you know, the arena does go under construction. So, you know, the departments are aware to spend the money just for the purpose that's at hand. So, you know, one of the things, I commented to Mr. Moss, because he asked some questions today, one of the things that we're really clear about, you know, that the carry forward process is not a substitute for the budget process. You can't carry forward money because you had surplus funds. You can only carry forward money because they're, for some reason or another, couldn't be encumbered or expended during the year by contract, and they have to show to us what the extenuating circumstances were before we would even recommend it to City Council.
If I could follow. The requirement for this shuttle specifically didn't exist in the prior budget year, because there's no consummated agreement. So there's no requirement we're carrying over, and there's no expectation of requirement carrying over. In the budget year that we're in, there is no current requirement, because there is no consummated arena deal. So in neither case, for the test you just articulated, does that item pass. And their surplus was $984,492, against which $191,000. So if those are your criteria, we're just not consistently applying the criteria you just articulated.
Okay. There is a slight modification to 1B, and it's on line 44, and I just passed those out to you. Instead of it saying of the date of the bill in that paragraph, it's past the date of the bill, is the wording. So...
Okay. All right. Planning.
Planning items. Item J1, Clarence E. and Doris Bryan and Cindy Feldman-Linhaven, Mr. Wood. Item 2, Ocean Bay Homes, Inc., and Patricia A. Martino, Beach District, Mr. Earn.
No issues with that, Mr. Vice Mayor. Consent, please.
Item 3, 5073, Virginia Beach Boulevard, Bayside, I'm fine with it.
I'll be abstaining on 2 and 3.
I got it.
Thank you.
Item 4, New Millennium Senior Living Communities, I'm fine with it.
We have something...
Did you see that Todd Solomon letter?
Ask to defer it.
Ask for deferral. You want to see that?
Yeah, I did.
I didn't see that. Todd Solomon, the short ride coalition.
I'm assuming he's referring to the community, not him personally.
I wanted to hear what he had to say before I said yes or no.
Are they going to be here, Speed?
Yeah, no, that's why. I mean, I'm really not...
Well, we'll see if they're here.
Okay.
Let's keep it on consent unless we're speakers.
Item 5, Outdoor Resorts of Virginia Beach Condominium Association, Prince Sam, Ms. Item 6, Freedom Properties, Virginia Beach LLC, Lynn Haven.
So I met with the applicant and their engineer, and reading through the verbatim and the issues there, it seems to me that they've addressed all of the issues. I also understand, the applicant tells me there are several letters of support that didn't find their way into our package, which I'd like to see if staff can get us those before the meeting starts. But I'm supportive of it, and it's, I hope there's nobody speaking on it. My understanding is the opposition isn't position anymore, so.
Do you have any language, Mr.?
I understand that. I believe it is pending.
You're okay.
I'm okay with it, yeah.
7, Myrna Holdings LLC, and Alan D. and Patricia A. Young, Lynn Haven.
Yes. And going back to 6, when I say I'm okay with it, I'm not okay with the recommendation. I'm okay with supporting it.
Approval.
Yeah, the recommendation is denial.
Yeah.
And I disagree with that. I'm okay with supporting it.
So you're in support?
Yes.
Item 8, Franklin Johnson Group Management and Development LLC, Virginia Wesleyan College, I'm fine with it. There were some people who objected at the, I believe at the Planning Commission, and they may be unsure if they are or why.
We'll hear.
I'm voting no, and I want to explain my vote after we have the consent.
I'm also voting no on 8.
We do? Okay. Then we'll pull it. All right. Item 9, Sacred Daggers LLC and Gibson Enterprises LLC, Rose Hall, Shannon?
Consent, Your Honor.
She say fine?
Yes, sir. And she says, "Your Honor."
Your Honor. Not just, trying to be nice today.
How about that?
Okay. Sounds like we might hear a few of these tonight, which will be just fine. Okay.
The Chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemptions from open meetings allowed by Section 2.2-3711A. Cutter Regine has been in for the filing purposes of publicly held property for discussion or consideration of acquisition of real property for the public purpose or of the disposition of publicly held property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A. 3B, Beach District, Council District, Princess Anne District, Lynn Haven. Personnel matters, discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, split, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A. 1. Council appointments, councils, boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies, and appointees, Executive Director of Sister Seas of Virginia Beach. Have a motion.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Edgeworth?
Aye.
Mr. Dyer?
Aye.
Mrs. Henley?
Aye.
Mr. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Wood?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Jones?